Okay, so thank you, everybody, for coming to the study session. So we are going to start with the Arts Commission wind sculpture. Sure, okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephanie Hegelgans, and I'm the newest member of the Yelm Arts Commission. I'm going to make this short and sweet. So we heard you at the last meeting that you wanted us to reach out to local artists. We reached out to two local artists on 311 and 313. The first artist is Andrew Carson of Seattle. The basic consensus of the email was that we could get a small one for 5K or a large one for 10K, and he gave us no other details. We also reached out to Anthony Howe of Orca Island. I sent him an email on the 11th, received no reply, sent him a follow-up email on March 27th, and also got no reply to that email. I reached out to a local Yelm resident who owns a machine shop in Fife, Washington, and he said that the wind sculpture is a very precise item, that we need a special program written to cut the pieces on a milling machine. The cost for such of this item would exceed our budget. We did vote on the previous sculpture artists that we spoke to and got pricing from. We decided on the Ponderosa. The Ponderosa version was chosen because we actually have a tree called the Northwest Ponderosa pine, and the cones are just like this. We still want to include art from a local artist. We've contacted Donna Rae McIntosh of Roy about cost design and installation of an art piece in the same area, the wagon wheel, and we are going to discuss that further at our next meeting. That's the update.
Great.
Thank you. I have copies if anyone wants to see it closer.
Does anybody have any questions for her? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The YMCA board discussion, or bond.
Discussion. Bond. What's up?
Yeah. All right, so we have two presentations here. One from Kyle Prong, CEO of South Town YMCA, and then the other from Jim Nelson with DA Davidson. They deal with our financials quite a bit here. We cover that one a lot. And I think it would probably make more sense for Kyle to go first, kind of give an overview of kind of where we've been and where we're at now.
Cool. Well, nice to be, everybody. Can I, like?
Absolutely.
How's it going? Good to see you again. Good to meet you first.
You'll throw these out to you?
Yeah, I know. I mean, throw them at you. I'm going to leave you out of this, because I thought there was only seven.
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
All right, so let's see. Where do we want to start? So some of you have already heard this sort of, it's not really a pitch, it's more of like, how does a Y get built? And YMCA's get built, so YMCA's don't go into communities and say, we're going to build a Y. We are invited to communities, and then we talk about what are the needs in those communities, and then try to figure out if the Y meets those needs. So that's kind of where, and since I got, so I am the president of the South Town YMCA, which includes all the YMCA's in Thurston, Mason, and Lewis Counties. We have physical YMCA's, and then we have program centers that sometimes operate in churches or schools. We partnered with six different school districts. We run 33 different before and after-school childcare sites, and then we have the three facilities: Briggs YMCA, the Plum Street YMCA, and the brand-new Shelton YMCA that we built, or we broke ground in 2020. I would not recommend doing that in a global pandemic. It's very hard to do, very hard to run a Y, very hard to open a Y. So hopefully, we won't be doing that here in Yelm. So then, once we, once the community says, hey, we'd like a YMCA, then we start partnering with, whether it's a municipality or any partners that we can find. So Shelton is a great example for Yelm, because it's similar-sized communities, similar demographics, and really, so I got my start in the YMCA. I've been with the Y since I was 15 years old, and grew up pretty much in the Seattle YMCA. On the I-5 corridor, if you're building a Y today, you're building a Y bigger than Briggs, which is 42,000 square feet, and it's probably going to cost you $60 million to build.
In the way that they build in the I-5 corridor.
We did not want to do that in Shelton. We thought, we need to right-size this for that particular community and figure out what they're willing to afford, because every community can, gets the Y that they can afford. That's really how it works. So I'll open it up to questions in a second, but generally speaking, we go through these phases. We try to figure out if there's a need, which we've already done in Yelm. There is a need. People want a YMCA. People desperately want a pool. And I cannot get enough pools to get people in. There is a shortage in all three of these counties. So if I build an aquatic center tomorrow, it will be full tomorrow. No kidding. No parking, no room for swim lessons, nothing. So the more pools that we can do, the better. Pools, though, and Jim will confirm this, pools are incredibly expensive to run, they're expensive to build, they're expensive to run, and they're hard to run. But we, as a YMCA, know how to run them, so that's another reason to partner. Across the United States, there are 2,800 YMCA's, and there's probably, I would say, over 1,000 different municipalities and YMCA partnerships. So this is, so partnering with a municipality is not a new thing. The other thing that I'll mention, in a small community, the more partnerships that we can do, the better. Small communities, you know, the more, the smaller the community, the more memberships I have to sell to be able to, you know, operate the facility, pay the staff, invest in long-term maintenance, all of the things that you do when you have a building. The more partners I can have, medical partners, it could be a municipality, it could be a medical partner, it could be the library, we've talked to all of these entities, to cohabitate people or those entities in this one building. So as an example, the Shelton YMCA has two things, or three things. It's got the YMCA. One part of the building is dedicated to Mason Health. It's about 2,200 square feet of the 27,000 square feet that the facility has. So they run programs through there, and you would never know a Mason Health person that's rehabbing a hip or a shoulder versus just your general, everyday YMCA member. Then the other thing, the other entity that we partnered with was workforce development. And so we have, they have about 1,200-ish square feet in the Y. And so they run their programming out of our Y. Again, you wouldn't know somebody that's, you know, trying to learn how to write resumes and prep for job interviews versus somebody that's coming in and working on a treadmill or going to swim in the pool or stuff like that. So generally, we look at need, and then we look at how we're going to finance it. And there's many ways to finance it, and Jim will talk about that, too. But the most popular way that YMCA's finance things is through capital campaigns. And within capital campaigns, there's all kinds of sources of funding. Some of it comes from private individuals, like somebody gives me a million dollars because they believe in it. Or we get foundations, we get businesses, and then we get generally government support, and that can come from any kind of municipality. Generally speaking, the state of Washington is very excited about partnering and helping build YMCA's. So as an example, the Building Communities Fund out of the state of Washington Department of Commerce has three funding sources to build things like YMCA's. One of them is called the Building Communities Fund, the other one is the Youth Fund, and the other one is the Arts Fund. And we, in this potential project, would qualify definitely for BCF and the Youth Community, or Youth Facilities Fund. Generally speaking, that's probably in the, I would probably pencil in there in that $3 million mark. Shelton has, and it's based on need, so Shelton's demographic qualified for a higher need, and so Commerce funded it at $3.5 million, and so that was very generous. We're very excited about that. In that case, in that particular year, so the funding for BCF to apply for that will be in the spring of 2024. So this project will qualify, I just don't know how much. The more that we do between now and the spring of 2024 to apply for that, the more, further along we are, the more shovel-ready the project is, the more likely it is that they then would give us those funds. So then, once, once we kind of understand how we might finance it and that there's a need, then we've already created a sort of a group that would do a bunch of different things, and some, and most of them are all overlapping. We need to understand where it's going to go. So site selection, you know, the more, the more obvious, you know, the better, because we want everyone to know that there's a YMCA in Yelm, and we want people to know where it's at, we want people to join it. So then you do site selection, once you do site selection, then you can kind of start moving down once you know the financing. And if you're going to raise money, meaning that's the only way that you're going to do it, meaning you won't finance it, or there's no other source of funding, it probably takes three-ish to five years to raise the amount of money that we're talking about. So if you, this is going to be the hard part of the conversation. If you turn to the first page that I gave you, and you flip it over to the second page, I'll give you some round numbers. So the cost per square foot is about, so this is 2019-2020 numbers. These numbers are not true today. I have to price it today. But generally speaking, we were at about $605 a square foot. We built a 27,000-square-foot facility that came out to $16,300,350. So that's what we paid for the Shelton YMCA. And Jim asked me if we are open to debt. The answer to that is, it depends. We took on a little bit of debt, about $2 million, and it was bridge financing, meaning we had pledges coming in that were going to cover the debt. So it wasn't like a mortgage, like a 25-year mortgage or a 30-year mortgage. It was, hey, we need, we need some short-term financing for five or six years, and then thankfully, the people that pledged to the Shelton project paid their pledges early. So then we paid off the debt. So right now, the Shelton YMCA is debt-free, which is wonderful. Super easy to run a YMCA when you have no debt. The more debt you have, the more memberships you got to sell, the more stressful it is. But there are other, and Jim's going to talk way more about some interesting financing that may, that is different debt than just your typical, you know, like mortgage debt. The Briggs Y is 42,000 square feet. If I were to rebuild that today, that's $25 million. A hypothetical Yelm YMCA at 40,000 square feet, it could be smaller than that, it could be, so the bigger the Y, the bigger this project goes, there may be reasons to make it bigger than the Shelton Y. One is, how many partners will we have in there? An example would be if we actually housed a library component within this Y. One very cool project, there's, I don't know that there's another Y with a significant library component, which would, which would drive families to this Y along with the aquatic piece, would be incredible. So that's a really cool thing. If you also included a medical piece to this, there'd be another reason to go to 40,000 square feet, in my mind. And then, and then the biggest probably thing that people are going to debate about is how many pool tanks. So bodies of water are a big deal. If I have one pool tank, which means that I'm going to do swim lessons, lap swim, any competition, and exercise for anyone, that body of water makes nobody happy. If I'm teaching kids to swim, it's too cold. If I'm having people swim hard, it's too hot. And if people want to exercise in it, it's too cold. So now I've got three sets of people that are mad at me every day, and I'll get, you know, a couple hundred complaints every day about that. So the Briggs Y, as an example, has two pool tanks. It has a teaching pool that is warmer, so about 84 to 85 degrees, and then it's got a lap pool that is around 70, it's probably closer to 80, 81, but lap swimmers would love it at 79. So the, so you, we, not here necessarily, but in, with the group that we put together here to talk about bringing a YMCA to the Yelm community, that's going to be the debate. It's going to be, how many bodies of water, and how big do you want your gym? I mean, those are the two things that'll drive the size of the facility the quickest. The other thing that we did in Shelton that is relevant to here is that we built it from a utilitarian standpoint. We, we weren't looking to create an I-5, you know, corridor YMCA that, I mean, the Shelton Y is beautiful, but it's beautiful from a utilitarian point of view. It didn't win, it actually did win an architectural award because of the way that we used metal buildings with wood structures within the thing, so it actually did win an award, but that wasn't the goal. So I mean, I went through a whole bunch of different stuff. If, again, back to a capital campaign, if we were going to just go strictly down the way that you would do it in a traditional thing with no financing, no public support, nothing like that, and you were just going to do a capital campaign, we probably need a $4 to $5 million lead gift. That would be the first gift that gets given, and that's probably pretty quiet, like, I don't know who in town is going to do that, but somebody's going to give us that much money. And then from there, then we would slowly build other big lead gifts, you know, from a million to up to $5 million. And then, once we had traction, then we would go public and say, hey, you know, we've got this capital campaign, we're going to raise $26 million, and we've got $18 million already raised, so we only need this much more. One other little part of Shelton Y, that Y was wired to happen, that project. I mean, so many weird things happened in that, in that process. One of the weirdest was that, you know, in, so on the Hood Canal, there's wealthy people that live there, some of which are the Gateses and the Nordstroms and, you know, famous-name people. They would not generally have an interest in a project in Shelton, Washington. One person took interest that was like one of the second people hired at Microsoft. She grew up in Shelton, on Hood Canal. She heard about the project. We pitched it to her. She gave us, not out of the foundation that they own, I mean, they have a lot of money. We're talking billions. So she gave us money, and then she agreed that she would work her contacts, her neighbors on the Hood Canal, and she fundraised for us. So she alone was responsible for about $3.5 million of the $16 million that we raised. And so, like, that's just accidental, like, again, like it was wired to happen. I didn't know the person. If we would have just gone through the normal route to go through their foundation, the project wouldn't have qualified. And then, so the Gates did the same thing, so I got a check from the Gates, like, personal account, not from the Gates Foundation. Same thing with Nordstrom's, same thing with all the people that she knew. And I was very lucky. But stuff like this happens all the time when, when you do capital campaigns. People, like, people you may not know, like, didn't know that they had this money, or, no, stuff like that does happen. So I'll open it up to questions. That was very quick. Again, the more partners that we can find, the better.
In reference to the fundraising portion, I know some of the concerns that were brought up early on with the discussion is that if we happen to go with a bond, where it comes from, public funds. Is it, one of the things that we could not get the answer of was if, let's say, it's just the city of Yelm that funds some of it, would the residents of the city of Yelm be able to get a discount due to the fact that their tax dollars were utilized to help build the facility? Or is that something that the Y goes, no, it's one price, one price for everybody?
No, there'd be discussion about how we make that happen. Oh, so in every, and Jim will talk, the Stanwood community is the same thing. They financed a lot of it, and then they did some bonds. So the answer to your question is, it depends. It's not one price. It'll be a specific price for, like, how much financing there is, and how we need to pay it back. So, but the end answer is, no one is, doesn't matter what the answer to that question is, what matters is, do we turn anyone away because they can't afford the full cost? The answer to that is, no. We fundraise to make sure that everybody can participate, no matter what the rate is. So whether there's a special rate for Yelm residents because they financed it, or whatever the other rate might be, if somebody comes to us and says, I can't afford whatever it is the rate is, we give them a scholarship. So that happens all the time. Keep going. You got it.
I was going to say, because being retired military, I know that the YMCA of Pierce County allowed military members, but Thurston County didn't, if I remember correctly. Is there a reason why?
No, we did.
Oh, you did? Okay.
We should have. I mean, I can't, I don't know why it would be inconsistent. So that was a, so YMCA of the USA had a special program with the Department of Defense, which would have been unrelated under every Y. So if we didn't do something consistently, that'd be weird, but, I mean, that certainly could have happened, but it shouldn't have happened.
Yeah, I was going to ask, does it ever pencil out with just the pools and not the other part of the building? That does not work.
There's no pool in the United States that pays for itself. Every single pool, no matter who built it, requires subsidy.
And these partners?
Brian's saying, yep.
They're within the building, these tenants?
Ideally, they would be. We would want to make it that way. And that's, we, because the other reason to bring them in is they may have other sources of funding. So again, whatever we decide to find, if financing is a, is on the table, because my board would need to think about financing as well, however this goes. The more partners that we bring to the table might open up other funding sources that we can't get, that they may either have or have access to, and that could limit the debt that we're, that we want to take on. And you might also, because you're a city, you, you're going to, and I don't know the answer to this, but you might get attractive financing that I don't know about or can't have access to.
And so just for clarity on Brian's question, doesn't matter what the people in Yelm can afford based on their disposable income, they will all be able to join?
1,000%.
Okay. Good.
Just to go back off that and the partners, right now, we do have a library that the city of Yelm is in charge for the finances of, or at least the building. We budget $50,000 each year for this, not to mention any random costs, if the HVAC goes out, which it has, random costs. So it is a cost for us to have, it's a very expensive cost to house it where it is currently. I don't know what it would cost us for over here, but I would imagine we can negotiate something.
Yeah, and we would love that rent, because if we brought the library in and had that rent, consistent rent payment, you know, whatever we could negotiate, probably would be cheaper and be a newer base. And then, and then we would, and that would lessen the amount of memberships that we need to sell. That'd be great.
$605 square, for square foot land, or is that just building cost?
That's just, that's all the building cost minus land. So what we did, so here's a cool thing. So again, partnerships mean everything. So when I told you that we had a committee in Shelton for site selection, and when that, when both the city of Shelton and Mason County heard that this committee was trying to do something and raiding where they wanted to place the Y, the city came to this committee and said, we want the Y in the city limits, and what we'll give you is, we'll give you 10 acres for free for a lease of a dollar for a year, and you can build the Y here. And where here was, was essentially on the Oakland Bay Junior High and Shelton High School campus. I mean, you cannot find a better location to put a youth-serving entity.
That's another possibility for our partnership.
And the one thing that we didn't do, that I'll change if we build here, is that there are not enough outlets to charge the phone. I mean, literally, we have 250 kids every day at 2:50. It's crazy.
Leave them in the parking lot.
Other questions?
Did you have anything to do with the Y that they were working on, with the tribe in past Eatonville out there? Weren't they trying to do that?
I did not.
You did not? Okay. I heard that didn't go very well, but I don't know.
Oh, are you talking about in Lewis County with the Y?
The river or something?
Yeah, so the camp.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I did not, it did not go well.
Didn't have the outlets.
Yeah. So what I gave you in that packet is an example of some language for a Yelm. So once, once we decided that this was going to be a thing, we would put together the booklet that you've got that would be specific to Yelm, and then I just drafted some language how that might sound, but that's what it would look like. It'd be this fancy thing that we would go and talk to people about. And we could, and if we were going to do the voter thing, if that was a thing that anyone designed it, then we would help create those things, too, with you. Other questions?
I just want to say, I just read that "Y Now," and that, that's very, that's very good.
I can steal that.
I mean, I don't know if you want to read that for everybody, it's a good thing. "Y Now."
I don't need to read it, but if someone wants to, I mean, are we recorded? Is that why you said that we were?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Oh, seriously? Oh, like?
I'll read it if you want me to.
Yeah, this is recorded.
I wish someone would have told me that.
I'm sorry.
I was dressed up or roaring a tire.
No, 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 look at me.
Or boots.
This is, it's more of our casual meetings. This is our, yeah.
No, but if someone, does someone want to read that? "Y Now," I think it's very key. I don't know.
Read it.
Fine, I'll read it. All right, "Y Now." "The need for a YMCA in the city of Yelm has never been greater. With rising rates of mental health issues, anxiety, bullying, and isolation among kids, struggling families, and growing social division and violence, the time to act is now." Yeah, I like that Y.
Cool. Yeah, I, so it's no, no kidding. When I moved here in 2015, Joe was maybe my third or fourth call of somebody calling me and saying, we need a Y in Yelm. And he was getting it from the perspective of people telling him that we need a Y in Yelm. It's not just because Joe wants a Y. It's, I mean, I think the need is there, and, you know, I have a lot of people that live in Yelm, that work at the Briggs Y, that work at all our Y's, and I constantly am asked, when are we building a Y in Yelm? And the answer to that is, now.
So the Y would belong to the community, be owned by the community?
No, it'd be, I mean, so there'd be a lot of nuances if we did the bond financing, and if you went out to voters, who would own what? We would negotiate and figure that out. At the end of the day, it almost doesn't matter the end ownership. What, what matters is that we build, and it's almost not even important what we build, that we build something for people to come to. It's really, the, the building is the building. The bricks and mortar is one thing, but it's the programming and the people that the Y hire that make the belonging and relationships and the connections and defeating loneliness and dealing with kids' mental health and all of that. That's what happens inside a Y.
So you're not going to, never going to say, well, I think I'll just sell this Y?
I mean, I can't even imagine that that is ever.
Do you ever sell the buildings?
Yep.
Do you ever trans, transfer ownership? They're just, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't imagine, I mean, I couldn't imagine.
Kind of a real estate question.
Yeah, you would, I mean, we, I mean, we'd have to figure out the ownership thing about the land and the property and all that, but those are all things that get, you know, dealt with upfront so that we know, like, how is this going to work? We just need to make the numbers work so that the numbers work to be able to continue to invest in the facility, because what you don't want to do, and I think Jim will mention this, and back to the question of, you know, can you do it with just a pool? The reason you can't do it with just a pool is it doesn't make enough money to then reinvest in the building as your boiler goes out, your HVAC goes out, your roof goes out. I mean, those are all finite items that you put in, you know, that make a building work, but they, they have a limited lifetime. And YMCA's, I mean, I don't know if anyone's ever been to the prior downtown Y. I mean, that was a building that was built in 1903, and it probably had 60 years of deferred maintenance to it. So they made that boiler last a long time.
So how much property do you need? How much property would it take?
It depends on what we want to do. If, so the short answer to that question is, we could probably get by with 3.5 acres. If you want to do ball fields and other stuff onsite, you probably need more than that. But it's, it's driven by the size of the facility, so, and it'll be driven by your city codes on how much parking you need based on that. But you could go as, like, so we have 10.5 acres in Shelton, and we've used, with inclusive of parking, 3.5 acres. That includes the building and parking.
In reference to that, and looking at your steps here, before we start getting into the financing portion, we figured, has there been that discussion of what it is that's going to be brought to Yelm? that's gonna be brought to Yelm? Because as you said, it makes a difference in reference to the financing. Is it gonna be a 40,000 square foot? Is it gonna be a 20,000 square foot? Is it gonna be 10 acres, three acres? Has, have those decisions been made yet or not yet?
So the committee that, we're calling it the Planning Committee. So I think what, I think the two, so the city council, it, it, both are informing each other. I think some questions that the Planning Committee has is, is, is city funding or, or bond financing an option? If that's an option, then that's helpful to know so that this work can start going.
And Holly and I are both on this committee as well, for the city's perspective as well. You know, it's me and Mayor, and her is the mayor of our town.
It's, I'm just wondering that if we're gonna get into the bond issue of, and we're gonna start trying to do the funding, fundraising, it's, right now, what I'm hearing is we're at the blank check portion there.
Yeah, no, I.
And that's what I was asking is.
No, I would not, in, in understanding Yelm voters, which you know better than I do, if, if I would try in this, I mean, I would try to keep it under 20 million if we can. That, that seems to be a threshold. Like, this isn't the biggest community in the world. My opinion is that somewhere between 18 and 22 million is the sweet spot.
Okay. As I said, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, and then, and then we, and then you have to make some tough choices. But if, if you say that you're gonna be at 22 million, or 18 million, or whatever it is, and you're gonna have this size of facility, and then you get Providence Health that wants to come in, and then you get the library that wants to come in, and then you get something else that wants to come in, it's like, oh, well, can we figure out a different way to do that? Because now what you're buying is a lot different than just one YMCA. You're, you're building a massive community hub.
And we have, we had had that early meeting where this exploratory slash planning committee, that we have discussed what we'd like to see. The pool's an absolute must that we, that we want. There's also, you know, like you said, healthcare facility, like an urgent care library, those are the things that we're, we're talking early. There's nothing set in stone or anything that said, we're gonna have this, we're gonna have that.
Shelton, a funny story, when Shelton called me to come out and do a very similar thing, they wanted a bowling alley. Now, they ended up not doing that, but it would have been the only YMCA on the planet that had a bowling alley.
But yeah, if there's requests, or if you think there's a need, yeah, this is.
And, you know, and I, I.
Absolutely, good need.
I, I think it's, it's a matter of what do, what do the voters and residents want, and what are they willing to pay for? And do you go for all of it or some of it? I mean, those are all, I mean, I'd love it if you wanted to finance all of it, because that would be a really short timeline, and we could go tomorrow. That would be awesome, because then you're giving, you're delivering something back to the city residents that they desperately want and need. That would be ideal, but I don't know that that's.
Right on the cards to spend another 20 million. We're just getting off the heels of, we're just starting construction of our, what, $37 million water reclamation plant, so, yeah.
In reference to the Y, what is the radius of a, of a normal Y? In other words, like, if one goes into Yelm, what other communities are we looking at that it would be a primary service provider to? Not secondary, not, somebody says, oh, I'm willing to drive 30 minutes to get there, but.
Yeah, so rural, so inner-city driving is 10-minute, 15-minute drive time. Rural communities might lend 20 to 25 minutes. So I would draw a circle around a 25-minute drive time and, and see where the, what that gets, and that's what that committee will do as well, to look at where is the most amount of, where would we place this to get the most catchment in a, I would say, a 20-minute drive time?
It might be a little bit longer for some of the places like Bald Hills, Lake Lawrence. Those folks are gonna come here.
As a subject.
And think about what you're willing to drive to.
Yeah. Ah, the Lake Lawrence. I've driven that many a lot of times when I was in the 1670s.
These are great questions, and I'm really happy to be here, so thanks for having me. Does anyone have anything else? Cool. Nice to meet you all.
Thanks, Kyle.
Do you mind if I stick around?
No, please.
I want to hear your deal.
Yeah, great information.
This is more on the money side, financials.
Sam Jim Nelson, I'm a bond underwriter, is just looking at my, I've been working with the city for over 23 years, so I want to thank you. So I'm here tonight just to kind of run you through the information, and I'll get into some of the examples, but as Kyle mentioned, I mean, I've talked, I, we work with a large number of cities, park and rec districts, metropolitan park districts. Since the last few months, I've had a number of requests, and there's some voted bonds coming, but I just, East Mont, Metropolitan Park District over in East Manachee, to meet the new director, and he went, he goes, yeah, he goes, these aquatic centers, you know, we never cover all our costs, so Kyle's right on, you have to subsidize it. So if we turn to the first page, let's see, page two, you have the option to consider non-voted bonds, but you have to be careful there, because that's being paid out of your current expense fund. So if you took on too much non-voted debt, it could impact your ability just to, you know, provide the, the adequate levels of services. And then a voted bond, so going to the voters requires 60% or greater approval, you have to validate versus, validate off of the previous year's November election. So some things to think about, most cities, fire districts, counties, and others will select a ballot date of, say, April, August, or November, but generally, they avoid February, because that's when the school districts go. So that's something to keep in mind. A lot of municipalities are going to try and avoid November 2024, because that's the presidential election, and in theory, that's gonna bring out more new voters. And then some in 2025 are concerned, because you have to validate based on the previous November election, so there'll be a large turnout. But Washington is an absentee state, so some, it's not an issue. But that's just something to keep in mind. These, some of these pictures are from Peninsula Metropolitan Park District. They did a non-voted bond. We turn to slide three. These are the hard numbers. You have currently a non-voted debt capacity of 21.6 million. With voter approval, you have 37.8 million. But then you have a second category for parks, open space, community centers, facilities for economic development, aquatic centers, and that's 39.6 million. So you're in a great spot as far as debt capacity. The third category, I tried to break out, that's for utility purpose debt. Well, you don't have to go to the voters for, like wastewater treatment plants or water sewer improvements, because you can just issue revenue bonds. It's secured by rate payers, user fees. So that's just something to keep in mind. If you were to go for a voted bond, the maximum you can do for parks, open space purposes is about 39.6 million.
Jim, do you talk, are you gonna talk about our current credit rating here for the city at all?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'll get to that one.
All right.
I got a special page.
Fair, fair.
So on page four, Moses Lake is considered one of the most successful aquatic centers as far as being run by a municipality. It's an outdoor seasonal facility. They've done a number of add-ons. The big pool, I think, was built like in the 1960s or 70s, and then they added on a lazy river, they added on a surf rider, and actually had to go over and do a due diligence tour.
I'm sure you did.
So that's a great.
I've done it too.
Oh, yeah. That's a great project. City of Furcrest went to the voters for 13 million. They hired a professional fundraiser, and I'm happy to provide the name of that fundraiser. And then they went out and tried to secure grants. So the voters approved the bond for 13 and a half million. We did the first series for nine and a half million, and then figured, well, we'll do the second series for whatever the remaining balance is after grants and fundraising. And the answer there was zero. They were so successful on the fundraising and the grants that they didn't, they saved the taxpayers 3 and a half million plus the interest. So that was a, and what they did is they had kind of, you might say, old family money in Furcrest, and the children that grew up in there that are adults now and learned how to swim in that pool, they kind of just, there was an outpouring of support, similar to the stories that Kyle was saying in Hood Canal. And so it was really impressive, and it was a great story. And this is the little town of Furcrest, and to raise 3 and a half million. Si View Metropolitan Park District, the, a number of years ago, the King County Executive called the mayor of North Bend and said, okay, we're getting out of the pool and parks business. We want you to take over the old Si View Community Park. It's a log house building with a gym and a pool and fields, and the mayor said, we don't want it. So they went to the voters. The voters approved the formation of a Metropolitan Park District, and that's been extremely successful. They do a lot of community surveys. They started out doing a non-voted bond, which was a facelift for their parking lot. They put in pavers, and they have a farmer's market there on a pretty, pretty regular basis. Well, that, they, that rallied the community. Two years later, they went to the voters, and the voters supported it, and they've had a lot of success. Though the last two voted bond attempts, even though the community surveys showed very positive, over 70% support, they failed during, during COVID. And I just got the call last week, and they're gonna go back to the voters for 27 million this November. So, and then William Shore Memorial Pool District is really interesting. They basically gutted their pool. It's right there in downtown Port Angeles, across the street from a Safeway, next to the courthouse. So they, they gutted it sort of like the way Key Arena was gutted, and then expanded it. They had two pools, like Kyle was talking about, and they did a combination of voted bonds, non-voted, and they did the first parks revenue bond, which was really interesting. They pursued grants, and that's been very successful. If you wanted more information, I'm happy to put you in touch with the directors of both Si View Metropolitan Park District and William Shore.
In reference to Si View, you said they, they went to a district, not just a city. How hard is it to develop that district, to say this is going to be the voting element?
Yeah, I get the question a lot. A great example is City of Normandy Park after the Great Recession in 2008 and '09. They were land-rich with their parks, but they were cash-revenue poor. So they went to the voters, formed a Metropolitan Park District, and then contracted with the city's Parks Department. And so they collect this additional levy amount, which can be up to 75 cents per thousand after they've, voters form that district. And, and then the city, city council still had control. Another way is similar with Si View Metropolitan Park District. They formed a new Metropolitan Park District, completely independent, no influence from the city council of North Bend. They have elected commissioners, and they can levy up to 75 cents per thousand on, again, the regular levy, and then they can go out for voted bonds. So sometimes that question will come up, sort of in these preliminary states, well, what happens if we're not covering costs and it becomes a subsidy, a drain on the city's general fund? Then that's one option to think about, maybe is to go out to the voters in the future, form a Metropolitan Park District. And it's similar way, there's a number of cities out there that you might say are getting out of the fire service business. You know, it's handled like Southeast Thurston Fire Authority. And there's others that are, you know, they can't, the water sewer is covered by districts. So there's just various options. Yeah, those are the four. Those are great examples. Next slide. So this is the sad news. If you look at that data point, August 6, 2020, that was the historic low in interest rates for over in the last 50 years or longer. You sort of got lulled into a period there where 20-year money was about 2%. Part of that was the quantitative easing, and then right after December 31, 2021, the Federal Reserve started to increase short-term rates to control inflation. Raising short-term rates, it pulled up long-term rates, the situation we're in now. The recent data point there where it spiked up where the red arrow is, some of that has to do with situation with the banks, and, you know, specifically Signature Bank, Silicon Valley Bank, and then the recent First Republic Bank. We think that the Fed will be done with their interest rate hikes. There might be one or two more, and then next year, fingers crossed, hopefully rates will start to trend down. So that may work well for your timing too. So now we get to the heart of the matter on page six. If you went to the voters for 25 years to fund 9 million in a construction fund, that would be an estimated levy rate of approximately 24 cents per thousand. So on a $500,000 home, you're looking at a monthly decrease of about just over $10 per month. And if you were to go to the voters for 18 million, then you could just double those numbers. So then the estimated levy rate would be approximately 49 cents. The estimated monthly cost on a $500 home would be about $21. Next slide. Stacy wanted me to include this, this as far as a detail, in case there's any questions. It's very typical that municipalities assume a conservative growth rate in your assessed valuation, so we assumed 4% per year, and then your payments increase 4% per year to match that. But what happens then is the levy rate starts out lower. So you can see on the far right, highlighted yellow, that that's where we come up with 24 cents. Any questions on page seven? And page eight shows if you considered a non-voted bond, and again, these payments would have to come out of the city's general fund. Let's just focus on $9 million, 25 years. That would be an average annual payment, about 588,000 a year. And, you know, if you're thinking, oh, that's just too much, and you took on, say, 4 and a half million, then you could just cut that 588,000 in half. Made it all in borrowing costs for 25 years, it's about 4.2%. For 20 years, it's about 4%. Again, I mentioned, you know, it used to be around 2%. And the next slide, Stacy wanted, Stacy wanted me to.
Stephanie, sorry.
Stephanie, you're good. She wanted me to include the detail on this, and that just shows the payment schedule with principal and interest payments, showing an average annual payment of 587,810.
We are about to close out our, our bond for the public safety building as well, I believe, next year? I, I don't know, maybe I do, but anyway, it's about 300,000, 350,000, same thing like this, interest payments that we're doing on it, or payments. So that'll come off here for our next budget, biennial budget.
Yeah, that's a great point. I had that in my previous notes. I think you have two bonds that are gonna be maturing fairly soon.
That's our closest, and the other ones are originally for the library, but also kind of wrapped around for the community center, I believe, Zara.
Yep, yep. Slide 10. So now we get to what the mayor was talking about. You have a rating of AA- , which is really good for a city of your size. You're in the high investment grade category. The higher the rating, then the lower the interest cost. So for, if you went out for a public bond sale, then we would help you through the process, and coach prepare you, and then hopefully you get a rating.
Wait, you think, wait, did you say we'd get a rating upgrade for this? If we went to bond?
Possibly, yeah. So the rating just goes with each debt when you issue it. So standard and quarter does a regular surveillance. But when you go out for a new bond, you can't just go, oh, yeah, we've got one.
This is from such.
From a number of years ago, yeah, so they wanted to be updated.
We just got this last year, didn't we, the AA-?
I forget when you got that, but, yeah. One of the things now is to consider an updated or new financial management policy, and that can help for get you getting closer to a possible rating upgrade. No guarantees.
So you're saying Yelm is pretty good at paying off their debts?
Yes. Yeah, they're very good. And if, this is a great segue, Joseph. Now we go to slide 11. And you can see all the debt, the, the ones in gray have all been paid off, but, you know, 2,000 non-voted bonds that constructed the public works maintenance facility, final maturity date 2016, there was a 2006 bond, the Killian Road. maturity date 2016, there was a 2006 bond, the Killian Road LID bonds, I worked on that at a very challenging time in 2008, 2009. 2003 Water Revenue Bond, 2010, you refinanced a number of bonds to lower the rates and save money. And so we're watching the 2012 bond, but rates just need to drop a little bit more. 2018, you refinanced the 2006 bonds. 2018, you also refinanced your LID bonds with a bank. And then the last issue is 2020 Water Revenue Refunding Bonds achieved a rating of, well, achieved an interest rate of 1.75%. So you won't be refinancing that for a long time.
Ever.
Yeah, that's right.
Probably ever.
So, yeah, Kyle, you provided great information, so, you know, one option would be for the city to consider, do you go for a voted bond for the entire amount, to have the YMCA operate the facility? You know, we see and hear that a lot. Do you do some sort of a combination? Maybe you do a non-voted bond and then do, you know, fundraising and pursue grants and donations, that could be another option.
You mentioned our limits for bonding, for non-voted and for voted. If we max out on that, does that impact our credit as well?
It does, yeah. But I think you're in fine shape. I have a city council workshop with another city coming up, and they have an aquatic center they're thinking about, that's about $30 million, and under the parks and open space category, their debt capacity is only like 20 million. So they're $10 million short. And so then what they would end up doing is going up above and using the voted debt capacity for general purpose. And so it would really kind of strain their system. So, you know, part of, I think, part of tonight's discussion is to give you the information, but then to go back and sort of prioritize all these projects and say, what are our future needs? If we did a non-voted bond, does that work? You know, do we have any other needs as far as street improvements, acquiring property improvements to, you know, city facilities? And it could be that, you go, yeah, this aquatic center project is really kind of, you know, this is the project for the city, and so we're fine with using up, say, you know, 20 million, 25 million of the 40 million. And so you just want to make sure that you don't back yourself into a corner where, a lot of times, well, you know, the aquatic center is fantastic, but it's not what they call essential purpose, you know, like a police station, or a fire station, some of those. And so then you also have to think about messaging, and if you go to the voters, you know, it can be a little more challenging with pool and aquatic centers, so you have to plan for that. So usually, as a rule of thumb, we say, start that voter education process maybe two years prior to the election date.
I have a question, because I'm trying to understand, I'm not a professional financier, not at all, but I'm looking at a lot of those rates of the bonds that we've already, looks like we've come to, maybe going lower than my four, even lower than 3.5. But then also the rating that I can see that we were rated at the time, it was an A+. So my question is, because I try to understand this thing, and then for the general public, so you're telling me a double A- is better than just a single A+?
Correct, yeah.
Just need to clarify, because, you know, a lot of people know this stuff.
Oh, yeah, 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 you got an upgrade.
A higher rate as far as a grade, would that substantially give us a lower rate as far as, you know, percentage-wise?
Yeah, if you got a rating upgrade, that would lower your interest rates. The spread between the grades, sorry to say, right now is about 0.03%. Years ago, it used to be, that spread used to be more, it used to be like 0.10 or 0.20%, you know, between each rating grade, but recently it's been...
0.0.
So, yeah, so if we're saying, yeah, if you're saying 4%, and all of a sudden you get a rating grade, then in the current market, that might bring it down to 3.97%.
Thanks for being honest.
Yeah. But it's also, you know, it's important, it's also a great public relations opportunity to basically tell your community that here's a national independent rating agency affirming how well you manage the resources.
In reference to the rating, if we were to get a district formed, how will that affect the rating for getting a bond and things like that? If Yelm has a very high rating, and then we bring in elements outside of Yelm to be part of that district, how does that affect?
Yeah, I would think that, like, Metropolitan Park District could be, could achieve a similar rating to the city of Yelm. You know, one point, one more point of clarification, you asked about the property and if you sold it, and usually, so you're issuing tax-exempt bonds, means you have the IRS looking over your shoulder. You must have a reasonable expectation to spend the bond proceeds within 36 months, can only be used for capital improvement purposes. So that's something to keep in mind. And then if you did sell the facility after issuing tax-exempt bonds, say for 100% of the cost, then that's something you'd have to talk over with the bond attorney. But a lot of times when we hear things like that, then you're, you know, one bond attorney might say, okay, now you use that, that real estate proceeds to pay off any outstanding debt associated with the project.
So you can pay off a bond anytime?
Usually the first 10 years are non-callable, not prepayable. Yeah. I have other customers where they do kind of charge a multi-tier rate, so if you're out of the city limits, the district limits, then it's going to be a higher fee that the users will pay. So just something that... And one thing I learned from Steve Burke of William Shore Memorial Pool District, it's great information, and it's interesting, he was telling me, I don't know if you heard this, Kyle, but usually when there's a new pool that's built and opened up, the serious swimmers all of a sudden leave the one they've been using and come over to the new one for a couple of years. So he was telling me the story that he saw his numbers drop off in Port Angeles when the swim pool opened up. And so then he figured that when his opened up, he would pull those patrons back.
We could see Michael Phelps.
Yeah.
Probably. And I think your idea of at least discussing a lot of parts is a good one, because it can expand, it can go beyond its limits, and it could expand stuff. And then you, and then the MPD actually has more leeway once it's formed, because then it's a junior taxing district, and it doesn't have to go out back out to borders all the time. And then it has a threshold of a cap. So lots of options.
Jim's not saying nothing, so you might be right about that.
Oh, I'm right.
He's right. I was taking notes when Kyle was speaking.
Yeah, I know, I didn't know that we were going to have such a good partner.
Yeah, I think the city's in great shape, keep up the work, and I'll follow up with that number I had, let me see, I might have it on the sheet here. Yeah, your 2012 bonds, they mature in 2031, 2018 bonds mature in 2026. And then I can, I can follow up with Todd and Stephanie on what that combined payment is, but that would be sort of interesting to look at and go, okay, let's say that combined payment's 400,000, and now, you know, you're thinking about a $9 million non-voted bond, you know, essentially that's an increase of 187,000 from what you've been paying. That's another way to look at it.
One more question, I heard the term callable and non-prepayable, and then you said within the timeframe of 10 years?
Yeah.
So that means we can't pay things off early?
Well, right, once you, that the first 10 years are not prepayable.
Designated to that payment, whatever that is, and then they say, hey, we want to pay this off, and I was like, nope, can't do it, not until 10 years is up, because we've got to make our interest on it.
Yeah, because our rule is, on the city's behalf, we go out, prepare all the documents, market it to investors, and we're trying to set the interest rate as low as we can, while still getting orders for the bonds. And then there's a certain group that they want to buy in that first 10 years because they don't want to have their bond prepaid, called in early.
I see what, I see how the world works, I see it.
So if the vote gets approved and voted on by the voters, is it considered done, and you've got the money right away to begin? Like, what's the timeline?
Yeah, the timeline is, whatever date you select, let's say, and a lot of times we'll see that city, aquatic, park, park district projects, they'll select April or August, kind of just before the summer months, or just in the middle of the summer months. Voters approve it, then we start working with staff, and then maybe you get your money around December 1 of that year. And then you would be on the following year's tax collection roll. Then if it's going to take longer than 36 months to construct, then you could issue the bonds in two series. So let's say it's a $20 million project, maybe right out of the gate, you do 10 million or 15 million, and then come along a year or two later and then do the balance. That actually dovetails really well, like if you're pursuing grants and fundraising and everything. And so maybe in your case, it might be, you know, $10 million piece, and then a second series for 10 million, and then it might be a two-year delay on it, and each bond can be financed for whatever the term is stated in the ballot title.
Kyle, what are your thoughts on timeline that you'd want to see from the Y's perspective?
I'm agnostic, I'll do whatever, I mean, whatever makes the most sense for the city and residents here, but based on what I'm hearing tonight, if there was a decision that there was some appetite for bond financing, and that was in August, then what would make sense is, is then we would, we, the Y fundraising machine, would ramp up, and then we would go to the state in, say, April. So assuming that it passes, we know that we've got $10 million or whatever that number is, we'd go to the state in April of 2024 and put in for the 3 million or however many millions that we can get from the state, which would then less, you know, that would add to the pot. And then, you know, we could think about if the city, again, was going to go to another series of bond financing, you know, the Y could potentially be a bridge financer in that gap period. So we build, we build the thing, whatever the thing is going to be, however much it is, and we have some short-term financing involved in that, too, knowing that we're going to go, I don't know that we would finance it if it was the 60% threshold, because that's like rolling the dice, but if we knew that the money was there, then we could finance, and we would get the bank to know that the collateral is coming from this other piece. So again, many, so many financing, again, Jim is saying that you are in a really good spot to make something happen.
Yeah, we're fortunate, we have a lot of options.
What I would say is, we don't want to miss, so if we miss 2024 with the state of Washington, we'd have to wait again to 2026. So I wouldn't want to do that. I would love to get into that round of funding, but again, they won't say yes if we're not, in their minds, shovel money.
I think for council, from what I've been hearing from the last couple of meetings or so on this, from individuals, there's an appetite for it, but we want more information on, from, I think, from our committee to solidify what it is going to be exactly in it, whether it's a pool, the two pools. So perhaps our committee can go ahead and figure that out.
Ready.
And then after that, bring it back to council, have a study session, and then have a couple of public meetings, and do the vote if that's what the council...
Yeah, you'd probably want to get, I mean, we'd probably want to get an architect relatively soon, and that, that's going to cost some money, but we can figure that out.
Part of the discussion I'd like to see about doing is forming a district. And the reason why is that the city of Yelm, yes, we could, you know, we could raise, but if we get the district, we're able to get a larger amount, and then we have more buy-in from a larger portion of the community that is surrounding, that are going to be, you know, pretty big users of that.
I think Metropolitan, or what's it called?
Metropolitan Park.
Park District, is a good idea. I think that we've discussed that internally a little bit, what it could look like, but not right now. I think down the line, yes, but if we were to form this, it doesn't happen overnight.
No, I understand, that's why I'm saying...
It would push this back to 2026 at the earliest.
You could do both, you could, you could go down the route that you were talking here, and simultaneously have the MPD discussion, and set that up for 2026, knowing that you might want some funding through the MPD to do other projects, and potentially even support this project from a, from a subsidy point of view. So I don't think you have to make the decision to do one or the other in advance, I think you can have that conversation, and then lean on the MPD in 2026, or whenever it makes sense for the residents.
As I said, I just think that, just because of the amount of the community that we're going to be, you know, it'd be one thing if we were like Olympia or Lacey, where we had a larger population, a larger footprint, going, okay, yes, we as a city, let's go ahead and just do this, but Yelm does not have that large population, does not have that large footprint. Our population and footprint actually expands bigger for all those that will actually be coming in. So I think the district is probably, in the long run, would be the smartest way to go, because then we include the areas that are part of our urban growth, we also include the areas that are out there, like Lake Lawrence, I forgot the other communities, but, you know, just all these other communities that will be, you know, coming in and reaching out and being part of us. And that's why I think that's probably the best way to go, is that getting that district put together. And that's why I asked the question of, what is the radius that we're looking at, so we can kind of go, okay, here's all the voters that we need to try to get involved and see about building that district.
Would you be open to doing it simultaneously, like Kyle said?
No, yeah, we could, we could do that, it's just I think the district is probably the way to go, so that we can get a better facility overall to, you know, instead of going, being small, because voters may go, no, we're not going to go this many million, but we get the bigger one, we can get the bigger facility, and then now it becomes the question of two pools, becomes a little bit easier to swallow, athletic fields that are necessary for the, for our community members, all these other things, it becomes a little, that big pill all of a sudden becomes a little bit easier to swallow.
It does, but it also impacts our day-to-day operations as well, as part of perks and all that, we'd have, we can absolutely start to, start looking into what it would take and all that, but there would be impacts, I'm assuming, to public services. Off the top of your head, Cody, I don't, I don't put you on the spot, but could you, but in biggest, what are the biggest impacts, you think?
Well, so when you create like a Metropolitan Park District, it takes away some of what public works is doing and creates it in that district, which is fine, but, you know, even Parks and Rec would be another thing, where maybe the events are planned through the Parks District versus the city. So it takes away, it would just take away some of the responsibilities we have and put away with the Parks District. We'd have to figure those out and line those out and what those are, because we, I don't know at the long term, but there'd be some immediate impacts to what the services city provides versus a Parks District.
Yeah, it's those two different models, do you do one similar to Normandy Park, where basically the Metropolitan Park District is contracting with the city, and the city council still has full control? Or do you just have a fully independent Metropolitan Park District?
Too big difference.
Yeah, and so another one, I'll answer your question in a second, this goes back to Brian's question, a lot of times we'll get the question, so, you know, the city voters vote on it, a couple of years later, you form the Metropolitan Park District, now that's a bigger area than the city boundaries, and it's like, so those people start paying on the voted bond? The answer there is no, because they didn't have an opportunity to vote on it. So that's, another thing that sort of comes into play is, you look at what's the estimated levy rate with the current city boundaries, and then if you went with a larger area, sometimes we'll hear that, you know, you've measured like the school district boundaries or something, or a hospital district boundary, then that could, that'll be a larger area, that'll bring down the levy rate and the monthly cost. And it's just sort of interesting, you know, ahead of time to see what that difference is. Yes?
I was going to ask, is it typical at all to partner with a school district?
I have heard that be...
I think we have a parcel of land behind our high school, that, this high school, I mean, that would be a perfect place.
Yeah, we've, we've had conversations, you're going to have a new superintendent, or you already do, I don't know if...
About, yeah.
But, so with the former superintendent, he's been very collaborative, I suspect that the new one would be as well. So there's always, yeah, again, the more partners, the better.
I want to meet to have it on school grounds as part of the school, makes a lot of sense, too. Football fields and soccer fields and everything.
Absolutely.
Soccer.
Yeah, go over there.
So back to Brian's question, would council want more of that, more information on setting up that park district? Or would... Or would, do you wanna move forward with that, with just the Y? Joseph?
I like a man that gives me options here, because we wanna have some options. You don't wanna just solidify on one choice. So I think it would be wise, I think there is a limit on time, like we wanna get this done before, you know, 2024, as far as making a choice of action, being trouble-ready. So there is kind of some, some let's get moving kinda want, at the same time, you don't wanna move too fast without knowing what your options are, so...
Know all that information.
Sure. I think it would be good to have the information.
Okay. All right, so I think we'll go ahead and have another steering committee here.
I can't wait.
Yep. And Kyle's been very excited about this since day one, and I appreciate the partnership and how you take my phone calls and all that, won't let me bother you and all that. So we'll get that one set up as quickly as we can. We'll come up with the amenities, partnerships, at least proposed, and bring it back to council along with information on what it would take. We'll work internally to see what it would look like to create one of these park districts, timeline for that and everything, and, yeah, get it back out to council, probably in the July, August timeframe, after all's said and done.
Is the cost of upkeep is taken care of by the partnerships within the building? Because we've always heard about what's the cost of keeping up the pool?
Yeah, it, well, in...
A huge amount.
It is, but in, so in the way that we've been talking, assuming that the YMCA is operating the facility, and, and assuming that we're having revenue come in to deal with the debt, if there is debt, and the long-term maintenance, I mean, that's all part of that, that money goes to there. I mean, it pays the staff, it pays the longer debt, it does all the stuff. So that's why we need to make sure that the debt threshold is not super big, so that we can still afford to, you know, because there's gonna be a limited, you know, we'll probably get, so the Briggs YMCA has about five thousand member units, and a unit is equivalent to, so, so a family of five is one. So one, so that's about twelve thousand people. So if we build a Y that the same size, you know, are we gonna get five thousand? It's probably gonna be more like two thousand, five hundred.
That's about our population.
We got about twelve thousand right now, ten thousand six hundred, if you...
So membership-wise, unit-wise, we're probably in the, you know, low two thousands to maybe three thousand. I mean, there, there are Ys that are in small towns that get a significant amount of the population, because it's the only thing in town. And right now, there's no pool.
But there's about thirty or forty thousand, right, just outsiders.
That's why I've been looking at the district, is that we bump it up, membership, and that allows a larger facility and things like that.
And I like the combination that you're, that you're talking about. So you can look at the non-voted, voted, and then think about this MPD when you do another study session, and you can think about, well, could we take some money from here and some money from here, and then in the future, do the MPD, and now you've, you, you can kinda go to market with that, that sort of a plan.
And you said if there's a debt, right?
Well, no, well, yeah, if you all decide that you wanna go out for...
But then if we go for a bond and it's a ten-year debt, as far as non-prepayable, then there's gonna be debt for ten years.
Yeah, there's gonna be debt.
So there will be.
Most likely, if we do, yeah. If the city's...
If the city wants to do that.
I like how you think if.
Well, I can't...
Well, yeah, it's your...
We don't have major billionaires in our community.
How do you know?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks for letting me be here.
Thank you, Kyle. Appreciate you both coming out. We'll, we'll get in touch.
Yeah, see you.
Thanks, guys. Thank you. Your word, I'm gonna save for the rest, or you can take off either way.
Talking about fireworks. Yeah. You know, one more thing I forgot to mention, so there's a reimbursement resolution that you can do when you're spending money upfront. So consultant fees and everything, you can go back and definitely replenish that with a bond, but for hard costs, there's an IRS rule that says you must have a reimbursement resolution in place, either before the check goes out the door or within sixty days, because if all of a sudden, you know, you're acquiring a piece of property and more than sixty days expired, then you've lost that opportunity. That's one thing. The other one is sometimes after these projects are built, I'll get a phone call and they'll say, yeah, we're having to subsidize things, what are our options? And then maybe they go back, you go back to the voters for an operating levy, and you might have to do that, say, every six years. But there's a few park districts that do that for their parks-related pool projects. So just some things to think about.
Perfect. Thank you, Jim.
I'd like to see if Stephanie has any experience with this, and obviously we have to talk to her, but the best way to put it together for a whole big picture.
Absolutely. Yeah, and she's been working with Jim. Yeah, and she has passed this, or this in this presentation that Jim incorporated. So, yeah, fireworks. It's been a discussion in our community for a while, for multiple reasons, from, from veterans' perspective to animal welfare, to people that just don't like them, and then as well as the fire danger as well. So love to have this conversation with council, see if there's any interest in adjusting or, yeah, adjusting our fireworks ordinances here in the city of Yelm.
I, I think this community really loves fireworks. I know that there are people who have pets and, you know, very concerned about that. I feel like fireworks makes, they make just as much sound as Fort Lewis does or JBLM, JBLM around the clock. I know it is a different thing, but it's only for a few days, you know. I'm a big fan of Fourth of July.
Don't get too much into it. We do have a, all right?
Oh, you got a personal presentation?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah. Feel free to interrupt anytime, though, and get into it, but this is our current, yeah. Yeah, absolutely, if you, if you just want to...
Okay, I didn't know the rules. I've never had to do this before.
Yeah, no, so in a, in an actual council meeting, you'd ask for a personal privilege, and you will...
Yes, but in the study session...
Study session, yeah, no, you're good. No? Yeah, anyone else go during a study session. Anyway, so firework ordinances, this is what's currently up right now. This is the RCW that the city of Yelm follows. In the next slide, I'll kinda go over some of the other, our actual local ordinances. But this is the, the main piece to look at on this is when fireworks can be discharged, and that's from noon to eleven o'clock on the twentieth of June, so June twenty-eighth to July fourth. So that's a decent amount of time. So is everyone good with looking through this here?
Until eleven PM on the fifth of July.
Yeah, no one really... I was gonna say. Enforceable, this is what it is.
Exactly.
In reality, you know, we're not gonna send police officers to do this, but it would give the ability to an officer or the fire department, you know, to, to say no. Moving on to the next slide, these are our ordinances here locally. We, under the Yelm municipal code, five point three two is under all the fireworks, all the regulations regarding fireworks. Basically, and then the first one is the adoption of the state provisions, which we just listed. But other than that, this is the main, it's, and it mirrors very, I think it's almost exactly the same, as the state's RCW. Part of the RCW, though, does allow us to entirely ban fireworks, adjust them to lessen than the, lessen the actual date that they are currently. And if you go onto the next page, this is the counties, what they follow. And unincorporated, they're from nine AM to eleven PM from July third and fourth only.
So they're the sheriff.
Correct.
They don't call Yelm PD.
Correct. They don't do, they don't call us. We might partner with them if, you know, it's around here and we work with them and all that. But there's also a provision in there, which I do like, and some cities are adopting recently, is with, when there's extreme fire danger conditions, that we do, we have the ability to go ahead and ban completely for that duration. And that's, you know, if there's, spin a drought, extreme weather, blah, blah, blah. And other cities have been using them. We couldn't, there was a situation, I believe in twenty twenty-one or twenty, where there was possible, we were getting, a lot of cities were wanting to do this, we weren't able to do it, it has to be, any firework ordinance has to be done a year in advance. So any, if council decided, let's ban fireworks completely, it wouldn't happen this year, it would apply to next year in 2024. So any decision, but you have to do it before that July, July fourth, so, or whenever this actually starts, probably the week prior to that. So if council wanted to do it after this, like on July seventh or something, when our next, whatever meeting is, it would apply to 2025. So it's gotta be at least a year. If you go to the next slide. So in 2021, the city council decided to put this to a vote for the people, an advisory vote. It wasn't a binding vote, so whether the city of Yelm residents said yes or no, it wasn't gonna change anything, but it gave the city council and, at the time and now, some information and let us know how the public actually feels about it when they vote. And so during this election, forty-four percent said, yes, we wanna ban fireworks inside the city limits, and fifty-five percent said no. So it's, I wanna say it's close, close, but fairly close, about, it's not, you know, not half, but it's pretty close. So, and there's a little graph you can see. And so, moving on to the next one, it's a couple of options. We could maintain status quo and do nothing, have everything as it is now. We could adjust days to bring in line with the county. We could adjust days to whatever the council wants to do, whether it's four, five, six, or we can ban fireworks entirely. So those are the options. If there's another option I didn't see, please let me know.
The reputation?
Yeah, please, yes, I think that's the last one. Go ahead.
So, I mean, I, here's the thing, a lot of these fireworks stands are nonprofit organizations raising funds for either local sports, you got things like, I don't even know who does it anymore, but I recall, because I was the guy that sold fireworks, okay, so I'm that guy, I'm guilty. The thing is, is for that weekend and all the, the parameters, and I would tell people when they purchase things to try it tonight, because you can. See if you like it, come back and buy some more. And then we would make money, which was also tax revenue for the city, and, and, and so in, in a week's time, I remember, I think we made, what was it, probably like forty thousand dollars in a week, which is, which is huge. I don't get to keep all that, all right, I only keep a certain percentage to, for the nonprofit organization. So a lot of these fireworks are being sold locally are really to help raise funds for local organizations, and beyond that, I really enjoy driving through Yelm close to about ten, ten-thirty, when it's pitch black, and I drive down Canal Road, and I just see boom, 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 and I'm like, man, Yelm is so patriotic. And then on the way home, I got to see this kid running with this American flag just down the sidewalk, and I'm just like, God bless America, let's go home and go to bed, this is awesome. It was really powerful. And, and again, not everybody likes fireworks, I get it, there's a lot of people with pets. What we do is we drug up our dogs, let them go inside the, and go to sleep. Wake up tomorrow, all traumatized, I guess, I'm sorry. I know there are some people who struggle with things like PTSD, I get that as well. This is a very heavy military community, and a lot of people are excited when they move from California to here and realize that this is a thing they can do, because they've never done it before in their life. It's a beautiful thing. I really think we should maintain, maintain the status quo, that's just my opinion. Some people might feel different, and I, and I do feel bad, because I know some people, like, it really affects me, and, and I'm just like, sorry, just take some pills and go to bed and see if you can be okay.
Sure.
I, I agree, maintain the status quo. The only thing I would be open to is adjusting the days, because it's, sometimes it's long. And, but the reality is, we're not gonna be able to enforce it, so I'm just speaking truth.
I have a fifth option, and this is, it's something I've been working with and trying to figure out. The fireworks, yes, I love fireworks. I remember being young in the seventies and eighties, and the fireworks that we had, they were, you know, reasonable. You didn't hear them ten blocks away, five blocks away.
Silent fireworks.
Right. So the fifth option, maybe, because I'm still trying to figure out why mortars are needed by a regular person, when we...
They're beautiful.
Oh, no. Well, I understand that. I mean, I've, I've been out in Lake Lawrence, where the two sides of the lake will fight each other. I'll launch and you launch, and, but it's when you all of a sudden have a small loop, and you have five houses in that small loop, as well as on one side and the other side, and they're all launching mortars, it gets a little, it's like, okay, I'm, I'm trying to understand, and then the cleanup that occurs, not one of those individuals who launches the mortars bothers to come into the yards of the people that have to go out and clean up.
I live near the lake, Lawrence Lake, I, yeah, I dealt with all that garbage.
The option is that maybe we could find a way to allow the fireworks, limit them to a certain kind of firework within the city limits, and then on top of that, the city look at doing a fireworks show that has the mortars, that has the capability of being able to, almost anywhere within Yelm, you're able to see it.
Fireworks show is absolutely something that we're, we've talked about.
But I mean, that, that's a nice little compromise that brings that into play.
But the, the fireworks you're talking about are already banned. We, those aren't legal, the mortars, those aren't legal.
Really? Because I, I have a...
They're everywhere, but they're everywhere.
You don't buy them here in Yelm.
No, you, you can buy them here now.
Not the mortars.
Not the mortars.
Uh-uh.
You can do similar stuff, oh, not even similar.
Really?
They're not...
You have to go elsewhere, down the road a little while.
Yeah.
Because I've seen the, because I've seen these here, the...
You'd have to, and I gotta speak with Brian Hess here, there, there are mortars.
There are mortars.
Really? Yeah. Who's writing that down?
The thing is, those fireworks tents are inspected by your city personnel. And so if they're allowing that, because there were times I got through, I was like, okay, I'm all set up, but I was like, wow, I didn't, I put my tables up how exactly, he didn't even...
Your mortars were here.
The ones you put in the tube...
Really?
They, they're on the safe and, and, and...
Safe and safe.
They're on the safe, the, the things you can't have are firecrackers, and then you can't have, boy, M80s, of course, but then I'm talking, what is it?
Bottle rockets.
Bottle rockets, because you can't really control the direction. But the mortars are, are solidified in the direction that they're going up. Now, there are safety procedures that come with them, now...
That's news to me. I didn't know they sold them.
I'm just letting you know, I'm not trying to blow everybody's party up, but...
We're gonna inspect the heck out of them this year.
No, it's on the list as, 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 it's on that list. There's a certain amount of, whatever it is, it's on that list, and it's, it's, what keeps the mortar safer when you put them in the tube, what makes the mortars unsafe is when you hold them in your hand.
Like a Roman candle.
That's not smart. And so...
Noted.
Yeah, and so there's a reason, and, yeah, and if you put a mortar in upside down, you're in trouble. That's why there are directions on there to put it in a certain way. But no, just so to enlighten you all, that's all you see through town is mortars. I think they're more beautiful. I don't wanna say no to that. If we haven't been following the rules, then that's something you guys gotta look into, because they've been selling those. They've been selling those everywhere.
Okay, I'll get, I'll get back to you on that, on the...
As I say.
Yeah, I'm shocked that they have those.
Do you have excisions?
I might do more shopping in town than on that.
I don't sell fireworks anymore, but if I, if I know a guy, I'll tell you where to get them. And again, we've gone through the process of making sure that they're legal, or else we would get shut down as a whole tent.
They say safe and sane, that's all that's required.
So, all right, are you, are you wanting to go ban those then, or...
As I said, we look at trying to ban, but the other thing on top of is that to...
Provide...
Provide the show as well. I mean, I've, I've been traveling with the military, there are communities that do that, and they, you still get a wonderful experience and everything.
So of those, though, what, what are you thinking? I mean, besides adding a show?
We, to just, to do the adjustment, because I'm sorry, six days of launching fireworks, or ten days launching fireworks is just a little ridiculous.
Asher, what are you thinking?
To reduce patchwork within the county, I would say align with the county.
I say, leave people alone for a few days and let them just have fun and maintain the status quo.
Besides, we're never gonna, we don't have enough personnel to go around monitoring what everybody's doing or take away whatever. So just leave
She said a few days. A few days would be the counties.
It's a week, whatever.
Okay.
Weeks of, weeks more than a few days.
Yeah.
But, all right, and then also Joshua Crossman wanted, he emailed me, he was a, maintain status quo. All right.
Just for recommendation, I get maintain, maintain status quo, but here's the thing is, there's already an established Fourth of July culture in this community and it's very strong. If you're gonna make any changes, that's not gonna happen instantly. Not that I want to, but what I'm saying, like Holly stated, is are you gonna be able to stop everybody from doing everything? They're gonna do what they want.
We, we couldn't do that now.
The biggest thing is, be safe, you know, make sure you buy things within town. What happens though, and no, no shout out against whatever, when they buy the big, big stuff from certain places, not within the city limits, and then bring them in to city limits.
Then when the, the tribe used to have one on the roof of their building.
Say no names.
I don't think it's any secret, you know, there is a
And, and so that's, and that's where you're finding you're really crazy insane, like what the heck was that?
We're not gonna like do a
We don't sell those.
We're not gonna
We can't sell those. Yeah, we sell little ones.
We can do something different too, though. There's a lot of options, silent fireworks, drones, just normal traditional fireworks show. There's a lot of different options. I, I, I'm with most of y'all here. I, I don't want to ban fireworks. I'd be very clear about that. I think that it's important that we celebrate our Fourth of July Independence Day. I do see, for, for me, it's more on the reducing the days. I'm all about celebrating Independence Day. I'm not necessarily for celebrating the June 28th. I see a lot of, I mean, not a lot, but we have seen fire in the past. I think that would be the biggest benefit of reducing the days where we, and of course, not everyone's gonna follow the rules. That never happens, but I think a lot of people would. I think a lot of people would understand that, you know, with enough education, that these are the new days, these are new dates to discharge fireworks.
So if you're gonna reduce days for discharged fireworks, you need to reduce days of sales, which is gonna really impact somebody's bottom line. Well, if somebody's gonna have the thing that they used, you think what's gonna stop them from using it? You either need to compromise with, make your sa, if you're gonna reduce days, my suggestion is make sales available on those days. Sales are available June 28th. People have something, I have a product in my hand, you don't think I'm gonna try this out? So if you want to reduce days, you're gonna have to reduce sales, which, which again, impacts what people would make for sleep. Again, my biggest day is for probably the last three days, the, the second, third and fourth, where you make probably 50% of your profit on the Fourth of July. But you have that open regularly so people can know where you're at. So it's kind of important to be open for a week so people can get small little things in here. So if you're gonna try, again, you, you can't reduce the usage if you're not reducing the sales.
I think people before and after are mostly stragglers. There's not that many. Some people, yes, but not a majority of people do it for a whole week. They just don't do it. And as far as having something in the park, my experience is if you go to any of the neighborhoods, they've got little block parties, they've got little cul-de-sacs, all the kids are there together. They don't want to come to a park, they're doing their own thing. So I just
These neighborhoods that have the block parties, everybody actually puts their money in that cul-de-sac. And they come to the tent as a neighborhood, which is really good for unity and community. And they blow thousands of dollars and saying, we're gonna have a great time and this is all the people in our neighborhood. Like, you guys have fun. And it's a, it's a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful thing.
What is that neighborhood? It's not in my neighborhood.
All right.
Things up back and we'll be moved to a
So from hearing, definitely no to a ban, to an all right, to an all out ban.
Correct.
There is some possibility or discussion on whether or not we want to reduce days. I know there's some that says no, wants to status quo, but from what I'm hearing, it's pretty split.
How are you gonna regulate all the new rules? Send the police out if somebody's got one over there on the other side of the highway on the wrong day? I mean, that
No, I mean realistically, we don't do that now, though.
Right, so, so why change it?
Let's not change the dates.
Because who's, it's people, it's the responsibility of the salesperson to educate people on these rules, and we do.
Half the people aren't gonna read the paper or know, I mean, unless you put something in their utility bill. But they're still they're just gonna pay attention.
So fireworks is available, then the use of fireworks should be as well. It just makes sense. We're not gonna regulate that.
All right, probably we'll discuss in the management team if, if we put it up for on agenda or something. Of course, you don't have to pass it or anything, or, but it would possibly give it another opportunity as well as Crossman. Although we, I think we know he's a no. It still seems fairly, fairly close. So, yeah.
If there was a change passed by city council, I understand we have a year for it to go into effect. But what is the, what does it look like when we inform the public of a change such as that?
That's a good question. I, we haven't had a major change, but I would assume we put, put it on social media, of course. Put it all in the, the paper and all that. But those are the, the main ways, yeah.
Being that we're minus one city council member and it is split, then you come down to the tiebreaker? Is that what it is?
Correct.
Let's maintain, maintain the status quo. Sound a little soft, sound a little soft. Where's, where's James?
I'm hearing now from three of the five here, you don't want, you don't want anything on an agenda.
I just think, I think it's useless. I think that personally, yeah, I do think it's a little long. I understand what you're saying, but we're not gonna be able to enforce it. So why, why waste the time?
And it's May, sales are coming in less than two months.
Again, this wouldn't be for this year. Next year, yeah. So it'd be over a year for all that stuff.
Well, then if you do that, everybody's gonna go bonkers on sales and make it a big bang.
So let's do it.
As soon as there's a threat of not
Oh, yeah.
This happened about five years ago. We're like, dude, they're gonna ban fireworks. And then everybody's like, I'm barring everything.
Yeah, but no one talked about banning that any. It's reduction in days of discharge.
Yeah, no one wants to ban it.
Nobody wants snakes to sparklers.
Snakes are my favorite.
Zigzags, zippity doodahs.
No, it was a good conversation. Sorry, guys.
But if you didn't hear, I'm worried about the strain on the fire department. They are strained as it is. So the longer we have days that people are playing with fire, the more unintentional harm to our citizens and those at the fire.
But we do have the option if the weather, right, weather or
No, we don't.
Oh, I thought that was part of the thing that
That's one of the options we could do.
Yeah.
Currently we do not.
Currently we don't. Thurston County does?
Correct, because they passed that.
Oh, so let's align with the county.
That I think is valid, that part. To me, it should be common sense. If we haven't had rain in two months.
We will have rain.
It's a hundred degrees.
We will have rain.
Okay.
All right, we'll talk about management team, we'll tee some up possibly with different options without a, a ban being one of the options.
We need to get a seventh council member.
What does that look like? I don't see that on here, but are we gonna
Yeah, I'll talk about that in my report.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Anything else on fireworks?
I'm gonna ask them if they like the Fourth of July.
I wouldn't ask you. Okay. All right, mayor's report.
All right, well, moving on to, moving on to elections, well, election slash appointments. I do have this list, I, I had it. Hold on, I'm sorry. Talk more about fireworks for a second.
Josh wanted to maintain the status quo today.
I had some good information about dates. I think it goes, Kathy, you sent me that, didn't you? Thank you.
We can put any public requests on the reader board, like, you know, please try to contain it to two days without making a mandate.
Ninety days. Nobody's gonna
Ninety days for the
It came in my Yeah. So, and I don't get one.
The reader board, if they're
All right, so the biggest part that I needed, well, it's fine, I, I know most of it anyway. All right, so the appointment process. We have 90 days since resignation of James Blair, which was officially the 30th of, of May. Excuse me, of March, April, oh my gosh, April, of April. So we have nine days from that date to decide a city, a new city council member to appoint that person. After that 90 days, it kicks to the county. The county, I believe, also has 90 days. It's 90 or 60, probably 90, I'm assuming. And then it kicks to the governor at that point, and then the governor would make that decision. I don't, we've never made it that far. I, I doubt that would ever happen. That being said, polling week for elections is in two weeks. James Blair's position is one of the seats that is open for that. It would be difficult to do anything prior to that, logistically from, from meeting wise. We'd have to either do it at this next meeting or the meeting after that. Oh, no, this meeting would, tomorrow, Tuesdays would be the closest and we can't do that. So the earliest is probably the second at May, but likely June, if that would be okay. It would give time, less than a month, but a decent amount of time for advertisement to hammer out the process, which I was hoping to get some input on from, from y'all. Rank choice voting is what we did last time, last appointment, it seemed to work well. If council wants to move forward with that, we can absolutely do that. Is that something the council wants to do?
I feel like the rank choice was the fairest way of, to meet all of our requests.
Worked out for me.
It did. Yeah, he fired
Term is to the end of the year, so
Correct.
For you, somebody would have half a year.
So the person appointed would fill that seat until the election is certified. And the election's certified in November, and that's by the county, not the state. So it's when the county officiate or makes the election certified. Go ahead.
Honestly, I think they would be actually filling it out till the end of the year because the new person that's getting voted in would not get brought in until January.
Yeah, that's not correct. It would happen at the certification, like Ted still will. Because for someone who's elected, they take their seat. If they're filling a, a, a normal seat, yes, you're correct, it would be in January. But if they're filling an appointed seat, that person takes the seat immediately, as soon as it's certified. As soon as their election is certified.
We have enough time to appoint someone rather than just keep the seat open. We have enough time to make that worthwhile.
Correct, and we should appoint someone. The question for the city council is who? And that's your, your all decision.
They just don't want Joe to be the tiebreaker.
It would be very unlikely to happen with rank choice voting, but it could.
Well, I'm saying as far as leaving the seat open, then the mayor has the power to go ahead and finalize. If we're split, he gets to make
If the council, and you don't want that?
No, I think it's fair to have seven people. I understand that's what we do when we don't have
Oh, I see. You don't want me making the, just normal if we're split.
Right, because we're, now we're a split council and we, we have, the last few meetings have been very split. So if we were to vote on anything at this moment and it was split
I'd be the tiebreaker, yeah.
And I'm, I, that's why we have a council, so you don't have to.
That's true.
But people have to apply, just like, right?
Correct, yeah.
Well, we have to put out for applicants.
Yeah, so if council's good kind of with that timeline, do we, for our meetings, the June meeting with the, you know, the first council meeting in June, would that be the
That one council would like to review the applications?
We, we can review the application during the study session and then the following week at the, at the vote for the appointment.
So June 13th?
What are we doing on that, that meeting? Is it pre-packed in the study session? This would
This is the baseline.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, June's, yeah, thank you.
You told you have coffee with you, but not tonight.
Yeah, it's water.
We have the Thurston EDC presentation, probation services contract.
Yeah, it's gonna be a longer
Only decision discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I think.
Does it sound like they're skipping the retreat too?
No, we still haven't. So without Jamie here, I mean, do you wanna, do you want to appoint someone? And then have the meeting, or do you want to do it without the
In the retreat?
The retreat, yeah.
Appoint someone, then have the retreat instead of having a retreat without a person.
Well, I thought the retreat was gonna be in June.
Yeah, potentially.
Okay.
We'll see if we have somebody by then.
So let's plan it without that mystery.
Okay, so the study session, you review the applicants. Do you want the applicants to go ahead and speak at that one? And then make the decision on the following council meeting?
We can't actually vote at a study session. So then that would be, I think time is of the essence.
We, we can do that, yeah.
Okay.
That might be the best way to go about doing it, is get their applications in. Even whether they speak at the study session or speak at the regular meeting, it makes no difference because they have a time limit on that. And so that, you know, maybe they could speak the following week. That gives them a chance to, we get a chance a week to reach out to them if we want, or they can reach out to us. And then have them speak and then do the vote.
So that was June 13th, correct? That's the first regular meeting in June.
That's the one we're considering rank choice voting, et cetera.
So you would vote at that meeting and that council member would be seated at that meeting, sworn in and seated.
That's fair.
And we can make that the first order of business too, for that meeting.
Yeah, and all right, so then is everyone also good with doing that study session, the June one in here? Because there's gonna be a decent amount of
Presentations.
That's fine with me if we do the study session here for June.
All righty.
So we're gonna invite the applicants to the June 6th meeting.
Correct.
Study session and they're gonna, they'll hold interviews at the study session. And then the appointment will be on June 13th using rank choice voting.
But they're gonna present themselves on the 6th during the study session, right? They should do it earlier.
Well, what I was, what I'd recommended was that we, we have their applications given to us on June 6th.
Yes.
And then on June 13th, they can speak because we're gonna, you know, we limit the time. It's not gonna be 30 minutes per person. It's gonna be kind of a
So you want to vote that first day?
That way they have from June 6th to June 13th to communicate with us. We have a chance to look at their applications and then communicate with them. And then on June 13th, the first order of business is voting, is doing the vote. And then that way they get seated and then all the other actionable items, we have a full council again.
That makes too much sense.
It makes so much sense. It sounds similar to last time.
Are we going June 5th as the deadline then?
For applications?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
They, they've had one.
Do you have to be at the meeting to vote? I'm not gonna be there.
Can you be online?
I don't know, I'm flying home. I might be able to make it.
I can be to meetings.
During June 13th?
I'm flying home on June 13th. I think I land at 6, I mean at 4.
All right, so council needs to decide whether or not we want to invite them to the study session or not, to speak. I'm hearing no.
I'm fine with that.
I'm hearing yes. So the 13th is, the 6th, you will be handed, the applications will be announced, because on the 5th, there will be the deadline.
Perfect.
No people.
You know people.
No people. They want to show up, they can, they can send the audience, blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
I'm gonna interview and going on the 6th.
Correct. The 13th is when we'll have the interviews, council can decide. Do you want, again, to have a, an executive session to discuss qualifications?
It might be necessary, but if we have ranked choice voting
We've, we've always done an executive session in the past.
The executive session is still necessary to be able to go through and
But then it would make more sense to have them present themselves earlier so that we could have time for a meeting and then
Correct. Oh, no.
In the study session.
No.
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 There's no need. The, the study session, we have their applications, which allows us to develop questions, be able to reach out to them. And then the 13th, when they come up and speak, we, we are all prepared with what questions we might want to ask them and everything else, and then executive session and then vote.
Makes too much sense.
If this appointed council member plans to keep the seat or run for the seat
Good question.
Then they have to also
So, all right, so if an applicant is also a
Candidate.
Candidate for that position, it has to be that position. What would happen is if the council decided to appoint that same person in November, as soon as it's, the election's certified by the county, that person would officially take the seat for, for the rest, for the remainder of that term, plus the, from November to, to January, January 1st, and then their normal term.
They wouldn't have to file?
Yes, they have to
Yeah, they still want to file if
That's what I'm curious about.
That's like right away.
They need to do that. Like, they should already know this is what they want.
Well, council will also have to make a decision. So, let me give you a different scenario. Let's say the person did not file for that seat, and doesn't want to be, um, on the council, or whatever. Let's say another person beat them during the election. So, that person's appointed, um, they're both running for it, let's say. Um, that person loses, their, the appointed person loses, the other person would immediately take that position, that seat, um, come whatever. Um, if that person didn't run, um, if the person who's appointed did not run, that, whoever, um, won that election would take, um, that seat immediately, that person would, disappointed, would vacate at that, um, when it's certified.
Person coming forward wants to run in the election, they have to hurry up and make application for the election today.
Not today, but-
In two weeks.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Can we put that information in the-
Put that in social media?
In the appointment, um, if, if, can that-
Information?
If you were to run for the, no, no, the appointment is, the appointment is whoever wants to fill the seat, if he's running or not.
Council will also, you know, make, need to make a decision whether they want, who they, what type of person they want. Would they want a seat filler just for, till that end of the election? They wanna influence the election, let's say, because whoever has that seat's gonna have an inherent advantage against the other person. Um-
No election interference, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, well, it's up to council if they wanna appoint that person.
We'll see how it goes. I know there's a lot of moving parts, but-
It's the election.
Most we can with Hess's suggestion, I think that's wise, but then we know how, from that point on, how it plays out, and it's gonna be what it's gonna be.
But, yeah, the same kind of social situation. Um, I doubt I'll need to make, making the tie vote, um, the tie-breaking vote, but, um- Yeah. If it's two people, it can happen, but if it's more than two applicants, I doubt it. It's very unlikely. Any other questions on that? That's what I've got. Holly, you wanna take it away?
What?
You wanna take it away with the rest of the council?
Oh, yeah. I'm just still thinking if I can change my flight. All right. Um, council member initiative.
Uh, I've got nothing. Um, yeah, good, good job, guys. Good job. Joe, that was good. Thank you. I got nothing.
Okay.
I always have an initiative, but I'm, I can't verbalize one right now.
Brian?[1723.62]